Lord gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you again for the beautiful day that you've given us, Lord, and the four seasons, Lord. We just thank you so much for your provision always for us, Lord. We don't want to take things for granted. Thank you for these citizens here that came out interested in the betterment of the county. And Lord, we just pray as this meeting continues, Lord, that it would be in your will that would be pleasing to you, Lord. And thank you now for these commissioners, give us wisdom, Lord. And we thank you for all these things, forgive us of our sins in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under unfinished business, number two, we approve the minutes of August 24th, 2021, a regular scheduled board meeting. Commissioner Patterson, any errors or omissions in the minutes?
I have none, thank you.
Commissioner Hertz?
Absolutely not, everything looks good.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of August 24th, 2021, a regular scheduled board meeting, I'll make that motion.
I'll make, I'll say.
All in favor? Number three, under unfinished business is a variance request from Richard and Jennifer Owen to place a garage 15 feet from Brent Lane. And this was tabled from our previous meeting on August 24th. Commissioner Cersei, anything you'd like to go with on that?
No sir, nothing's good.
Okay. Commissioner Patterson?
We got, yeah, they, it's not bad.
Yep, this, this is the one that I had Dr. Keith Nicholson and also Pam Swexley, Pam, Pam. We actually looked it up, 15 foot Brent Lane, there's only one, one other lot down below it that already has an existing home. They both thought that there would, there would be no issues with putting this garage 15 feet from that, from that road. It is a small road. They didn't have any, didn't have any issues, and it has no prescription, so.
That's good, that's good. All right, I'm good with it then.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion that we approve the variance request from Richard and Jennifer Owen. I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
Sir.
All in favor? Number four, is also under unfinished business, it's a variance request from Jared and Nancy Yagman. And it was to place a garage two feet from the property line. This was tabled, I think, three meetings ago, till Mr. Ms. Yagman could come up and we could kind of go over a few things. They own a lot right next to where they're trying to build this, but due to HOA restrictions, they would all, they would be required to build a 3,000 square foot building on that property. So, we don't mind, I'll start after this one. I met with Mr. Ms. Yagman. When we were sitting there talking to Ms. Woody, she had the stipulation be added if the lot is ever sold, that 15-foot sec bag be required with a deep plating. And Mr. Ms. Yagman did sign off on that. And by doing so, that would, that would take care of any needs that we have, as far as ours goes. So, Commissioner Patterson, anything on?
I think that's a good plan, I think that, that'll work.
Commissioner Cersei?
I guess so, all right.
All right. Well, I'll ask for a motion that we approve the variance request from Jared and Nancy Yagman.
Make that motion.
I'll make a second, all in favor? So, under new business, number five, it's a board action to rescind the prior appointment of Casey DuPont Eaton to the Tax Assessor Board. Commissioner Cersei, I think you had spoken this evening?
Yes, yeah. She was, she hated it, but with her family and kids, young children and stuff, and the way the schedule was made up of the training that she'd have to, by law, have to have, she couldn't see that she could complete that, that task. So, with regret, she hated coming off. And I did tell you because I thought she was, you know, she should have been a good one, but I understand, she, she's, she got those young babies, and they're first, so. Then I had to get out and go find somebody else. And that was tough, so.
Well, Commissioner Patterson, any discussion on that?
No, I understand.
Okay. I too understand, I know it's a, it's a pretty hot position, and it requires a lot of training and stuff like that, and schooling, so, but, but I will make a motion that we rescind the prior appointment of Casey DuPont Eaton to the Tax Assessor Board, I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
All in favor? Number six, move right into that. It's appointment of, I guess you did find somebody?
I found somebody.
A board of Phyllis Matthews to the Fannin County Tax Assessor Board, and that is post one appointment. Is, is Ms. Matthews here?
I did tell her to come, I mean, sorry. Yeah, she is a retired educator, her and her husband George, they, they've lived in Fannin County for about 12 years, super duper people. And she wanted to be involved, and I talked to her a little bit about it, told her what, what it consisted of, that there was a lot of training. Her being an educator, she knew that, and so she was ready to fill that role and try. And so, she's looking forward to all the training and schooling, and, you know, she's used to it.
And she retired?
Yes, sir.
From the high school?
Not this high school, they moved in, I think, she was with the Bibb County School System. And so, so they've retired up here, been here quite a while.
Good, good.
And, so I'll make a, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint her to our Tax Assessor Board.
Okay. I had a motion made, appoint Phyllis Matthews to Fannin County Tax Assessor Board. Ask for a second?
My second.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you.
Sir. I think we discussed this at a prior meeting, anybody that wants to, to be on the board, please, just submit us an email, and we'll see if we can find you a place. Because I know there's a lot of folks not wanting to sit on the board anymore. It is kind of hard to find some here and there, so, if you ever want to sit on the board, I remember.
See, if things got training now.
Yeah, I know.
It's just not like a day, it's like 40 hours.
You were right, Chairman, hence this like a act of Congress, isn't it?
It might be easier to get a pass, do they?
Rider's crank.
Yeah. I start a peeing paint factory. All right, new business number seven, Public Works Director Zach Ratcliffe. I'll talk to him about some more equipment that is needed.
Yeah, that's what he said, more money. I'd like to, I'd like to go into a little bit of details on where this money's coming from before we talk about this. Just let, let everybody know, we get a tax bill, everybody gets one in the county. There's two parts of that tax bill, you'll find a scope tax, and you'll find a county tax on there. And that county tax is where our money comes from, is for a 7%, is what rolls into my department, out of the whole bill, with 7% in. That's where, that's my employees' salaries, their insurances and stuff like that, general, just the general, that type of stuff with those guys. They get us Flos, takes care of this paving, equipment, those folks who pay this Flos is mostly out of town who come in here to do business. So, the people who residences this county, basically, your rubber partners get about 7% of that, little bill that's a lot less than the, the other bill that's in scope work. So, that's kind of where we're at, but if anybody thinks we're spending all the money of their money, yeah, it is their money, but it's coming through the Flos, it's not just tax bill. Just to let you know where it's coming from.
But don't we have a certain amount of time also that we, does this, does this, these monies have a certain amount of time to spend or anything?
Well, I'm not sure, but the lean is, oh, I can't remember that specific case.
We have to spend, we have to spend this Flos money before we go into the next Flos.
Correct, yeah, exactly.
Well, I mean, then we're on track.
Right. Okay. I think we might be behind track a little bit, we need to get their stuff together and get some of this taken care of, yeah.
Or you just told us that.
I hope, I hope. And as far as equipment, yeah, we're behind, I mean, if you're going to have the guys go out here and keep making the job on a truck or something, I can't say the mechanics are trying their best to keep it going, and it's just so worn out that that's just what we're running into. So, and, and safety too, and other things. Just, just to let you know where we're at. We're, we're probably looking at not just this time, but home down the road, a few more pieces of equipment, trying to get our stuff back where it should be, so.
But you're also getting rid of equipment that we're replacing.
Oh, yeah.
Comes off of the tax.
As a matter of fact, I got rid, I got rid of two pieces in the last couple of weeks. And one, one today especially, I, I didn't have any idea what we got for what I did. It was a 93 Ford van, it'd get cold, it was a, it was a compound. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, I'd be afraid to drive to the road, but something like $1,300 for it, so I gotta have that.
You had something out there that said, that was real old, that you couldn't believe you got?
That was the mass furniture factory that would not run, I think I got $4,000 out of it.
That's good. What'd you do with that, put it back in your account?
It goes into the general fund, our general fund, yeah.
Okay.
I never, I never save the money, it goes directly from GovFields.com, goes straight into the, I guess it's cut and checked.
They probably just drop it in.
Yeah, so, so there's no money changed in, so it's definitely all legit.
Okay, good thing.
Patrick Young. Now, what I'm asking for today is one of, one of the main things that we've been having lots of trouble with.
Cattle's lot.
Is the, our dead trees, and the leaners, and the limbs and stuff. So, we found this truck, and they, if you're gracious enough to let us do a demo with it, it is a used truck, and they're asking $45,000 for it. And that thing reached 67 feet, and we have cut numerous trees in the last week with it, or at least some of the stuff we've been cutting down.
Is the hydraulics all good?
All good, yep, I dare picture other truck.
Four-wheel drive?
Four-wheel drive. Got a big winch on the front, and it's a, it's a house right there, lady.
Okay.
How much is that new, I mean?
Well, I talked to Tri-State out there when they're buying their deals, it's over $200,000. And that was, uh, 2009, it's got 94,000 miles on it. It's automatic, four-wheel drive, I mean, it's, it's got all the bells, and that's what we want to do with it.
Ocean inspected and all that?
It is, it is, has been inspected, and Tri-State's, they do theirs once a year, I'm going to be in line with them, and they do an X-ray on the boom, and I'm going to get with them to have an X-ray done on my truck, as they do theirs.
Okay.
So, we're in line to do that. We're also in line to do a bucket rescue, safety rescue with, with Tri-State officers. I'm going to get my operators out there, I've got two operators, it's, it has been doing them with our company for some years, and they're very familiar.
Don't let Larry say it.
Have any grandmas caught, uh, cat, trees?
Not yet, no, no, not yet.
I think Liam's got some cats, though.
That be on your front door? But that's, that's what I'm asking for, I think it, it's going to be a great asset for us, it's, it's really one. There's many of the trees that we've been cutting down, and I got, I got this real tree sometime back that had a couple limbs, and just for one limb, it was $700 bucks.
To give Liam a cut?
Yeah, yeah, let's leave it underground, it's all in.
$100 just for a limb.
So, the guys, I kind of told the guys what was that, you know, the $700 limb, and they come to me the next couple of days, they said, I think we just made a payment on the truck, the first they cut down, so, so, yeah.
Can you try?
It'll make for itself.
I think so.
Make sure you market.
Oh, it will, yes, until you guys be approved, I'm not going, that's until the end, but yeah, whatever.
And that comes out of your budget from Flos?
Flos, yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's, that's Flos, again, that, that's, that's the one cent cell tax that those people pay when they come to your business.
Doesn't hurt our citizens.
No, no.
As long as we can provide a good service to them, that's all.
Okay.
That it?
We got Minister, ask Minister Bogan. I think he's asking Mr. Bogan.
Yes, sir.
Oh!
Well, that is pretty awesome, these equipment. Sure. And that is something we, even prior to me getting elected, that, you know, we, if we're going to provide a service, we need to have the equipment to provide a good service. And we, we know, we, we chase good money with bad a lot of times, and it's time to, whether anybody wants to hear it or not, it, it is time, just got to make sure that we get some stuff. And just a little tidbit on the taxes you was just talking about, I always hear this, well, I've got a million dollar home.
Yeah.
And the county forces of the taxes is $1,547 on a million dollar home. And if you figure out that 7% out of that, you don't have to wait too much.
You have tougher road travel out of there.
So, yeah, it is, so, I mean, just a little tidbit, but anyway, they need.
I went up there with Zach and laid eyes on it, it, as advertised, it's a good truck, I think, you get good, good service out of it, so I'm all in.
I feel the same way, I went out there and looked at it, and it's, it's impressive, I mean, and I, I knew that, you know, during storms and stuff, I think you even went out yourself with the crew and cut up some trees. So, I mean, you know, it's out there, and the people expect us to keep their roads in good shape. So, good job, Jared, that.
I can also say I'm in plant mode and I'm afraid of hacks, so I, I stayed on green.
You can see over the top of the bucket, what?
I can see the top of it, what are you talking about?
I like moving up those greens.
Um, I'll make a motion that we purchase this bucky truck for $45,000.
Second.
All in favor?
And I got one other item that we're talking about, is striping on some of the things that we have done. And originally, I talked to you guys about the, the price of the striping, and I got another quote today, finally came in, the guys finally got some materials, and we're looking at about $45,000 for $50,000 to strip all of those roads that we've talked about, plus maybe a little bit more. Originally, we were talking about $90,000 to pave, to strip for those roads, and they called me up, and he was open, he's hands on the paint, he says they could probably strip them for us, for around, you know, in the $40,000, $40, $45,000.
And how many roads have we paved?
We've paved, we've paved, well, contractors paved three, that would be the Ada Street, Dial, and the Tenscore. We've paved Beard and Road, so we, we need also to strip on that thing too, so.
So, we've paved it, but we've not put stripes on?
No, not yet, no.
And, and the people that contracted to pave, they didn't, striping wouldn't include?
It was included because the prices were going so high. We're trying to, try to get a deal on something, because.
What is the price of the gallon to paint?
Well, I don't know what the gallon is, but I know what it is, uh, we, let's see, will I continue about the other roads?
Yeah.
Let me tell you right here, um, okay, Tenscore Road, I think it's like, I can't remember if it's two miles or what it was, do they? It is $25,000 to strip that road.
To strip a road?
Yes, sir. That's what painting is, right there.
You got a roller?
Yeah, a roller, we have to get a couple rollers.
And if, I mean, I can go on here, let's see, here's, here's a real good one, it's Ada Street, I think it was $37,000 or something like that. Yeah, I don't, I don't have to do it.
We have all the roads that are, are named and striped.
Yeah, we do. Ada Street, $37,600.
And that's from where to where?
Uh, that's at the city, city limits at Industrial, to the intersection of Galway. That's what that is.
It's amazing.
The way they measure the stripes is they measure each stripe as a linear foot, so it's four times the width that is, but, you know, this is a, they're pretty expensive. Paint, look, I was painting Jamie a little bit about the paint, the paint pigment place in Texas. I think it's the only place in the Southern United States that paints it, they're shut down, they're in cove. That's why the paints suck in this.
Is that, where's the state that get their paint?
Same place.
So, they're having the same issues?
Same issue. But some of these places big enough to, you know, just pick them up, use the docket, and they'll keep it, they've got a little head.
And all this is going to come out of your Flos?
It'll come out of Flos, again, everyone else put, Flos.
Okay, all right.
So, I'd like to ask for $50,000, originally, I asked him just in case there was any variation between the time I called him back, because he said, hey, it'll get changed, so, most likely will not use that much, but I'd like to be able to, if I got started and get covered, so, don't have to come back for $1,000 or two.
Was it, was it, made up to share, or what? How you going to do that?
I'll have to unload on that one as well, yeah.
Okay.
So, you, you asked him for that now, go ahead, and that way we'd like to contact him.
If I don't use it, I'm hoping we won't use all of it, I just leave the rest if I can leave long. I'd like to be comfortable in getting all of it done, so.
Measure $50,000?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, I will ask for a motion that we award up to $50,000 for the striping of four roads. That would be Ada, Old Dial, Tenscore, and Beard.
Correct.
Okay, well, I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
My second.
All in favor?
Thank you, guys. Now, just a little FYI for you guys, I know there's been some questions asked about our county bridges, and you can sleep at night, the bridges are safe in Fannin County. I've got a guy, he is a DLT State Bridge Inspector, that's his job, and they come every two years, so if anybody's got any thoughts that the bridge has not been inspected, they are every two years. If I have any inkling there might be something wrong, I get this guy called, and they inspect it, that's, that's.
Who inspects, State?
State does, yes, sir. This is a federal mandate that we have to have, that, that's something that just, you know, wander in on, it's the federal.
Okay, I have to ask you to do that?
Yep, makes me do it.
Okay, cool.
That's just a, something I was going to ask.
All of ours, all of ours, and get checked.
All of ours, but there's a few little, you know, little things that has to be done, maybe some painting there or something, but nothing, nothing's safe, everything, all's safe, if there's something safe, they will, they will be all over it, so, there's nothing.
Just in case somebody here asks, I don't know, we've heard about the Macasville Bridge, that's not included, because that's city, right?
Uh, Macasville, we were talking about the concrete bridge.
Concrete bridge.
That would be the State George Farm Ridge.
That's the State, right away, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody good?
I'm, I'm.
Jim was in.
Have they given any indication where they might start? I know, I got an email a while back about the Madola Bridge.
There, there, last, as, I went by there today, out in the woods, and they have been inspected for about, I didn't expect, and, uh, surveyed for about a week, and I know we're getting ready to do something out there. I know they were really hesitant to start it, but the way, it would be a nature course, and with the four lane being widened and all that stuff, they were really hesitant about starting it and causing another confusion somewhere else, so, they're, they're working, so. They will be doing this soon.
All right.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you. Okay, number eight, Ness Director Becky Hudson. Do our ambulance service rate increase in bid per pound?
So, first thing that I feel about is increasing our filling rates. They've not been increased in about 10. So, first thing that I feel about is increasing our billing rates. They've not been increased in about ten years. Um, we checked with the comparable counties, we can't really compare it like Cherokee, Georgia and stuff, they're a lot bigger than we are. Um, but we checked with the local comparable counties in our region, we're in region one. Um, and we are well below what they are charging for the billing rate. Um, everything's went up, the cost of vehicles have went up, the cost of our supplies have went up, our PPE, especially during COVID, um, has doubled. To buy gloves, it was seventy-five dollars per case, now it's almost a hundred and sixty dollars per case for just gloves. And we have, we use gloves on every call. Um, so, it's just something that we probably, we needed to address. Um, I'm not asking for a huge increase. Even with the increase that I'm asking for, we're still lower than the surrounding counties.
Which targets them?
Um, it's not a whole lot. The main thing that's gonna increase a little bit more is, um, special care. More, you know, the more drugs and the more, um, critical the patient is, the more we have to do, so the, the billing would be a little bit more. Um, mostly, we're right along right now with what Medicare will allow. We'll be a little bit above that, but with speaking of our billing, um, she said most people have supplemental insurances, so they usually pick up the difference. It's not gonna be really, and a lot of our, our, I say a lot, but a majority of our calls are from the influx of people that we have inside the county. And it's not really necessarily geared towards taxpayers or anything like that. I know they pay taxes and it helps with our, our services, but we do have an influx of people that aren't county citizens and don't pay county taxes, so it would help a little bit offset that since we do have an influx of people, especially here lately, end of the weekends and stuff. So, it's not a whole lot, like I said, we're going up maybe a hundred dollars here and there, um, per the service, so. And our billing rate for mileage would go up about three dollars a mile.
And that still puts us lower than, than the other comparables?
Yes, we are well below, especially, um, one of the other ones, we're well below what they're charging. Um, and like I said, we've not increased, um, I think it is somewhere, we're well below. Um, and in Black Pickens County, we're a lot lower than especially ACLS care, we, we're not even happy with what they're charging. Most, most of the surrounding counties charge, especially for ACLS specialty care, they charge nearly a thousand dollars. And we're only asking for eight hundred dollars for the service. That's not, that's just a one-time fee that they charge. And then there's additional things like we use equipment and stuff like that that charge, but that's not increasing. Even though the cost of us has increased, it's just for that specific type of call, um, that we would have. A BLS emergency is not gonna increase that much, which is something that, you know, we have two EMTs on the truck, um, which we normally don't run and run ACLS on most of our jobs.
So, is, is, we go into general fund?
Yeah, all of, everything that we get back from our billing and everything, it's, it's like most everything else, it goes right back into the general fund, it's dispersed amongst the county.
And then like buying the gloves and everything comes out of it as well?
Well, yeah, that goes back into our budget so that we can purchase them. Um, which this year we've done pretty good, even though COVID hit us pretty hard with our medical supplies and everything. That's fluctuating, you know, with the need and demand, that kind of makes things go up just a little bit, but. Like I said, that's just one example, but everything, especially when it has to do with PPE, has doubled. We bought five cases of N ninety-five masks and that was over a thousand dollars. Um, there was only, I think there was five hundred masks and that was, that, there was nearly a thousand dollars. And that's pretty much, I think we're required to wear N ninety-fives on every call. We are reusing them. Um, they're, they're kind of supposed to be for, but in this situation, you know, we've been reusing them if we have to. Um, we do wear a surgical mask or something over the top of it, um, so that it doesn't get contaminated as much. But, um, for the most part, you know, we've been trying to cut down on how much we're, you know, having to throw away. And everybody's been real diligent about keeping our supplies as much as they can, but, you know, when you get into a situation, you use what you have to use and you don't really think about costs, so.
One question, like, I seen some, some place maybe had like a respirator mask.
I've been looking into that and I was hoping that we could, um, I'm looking for one that is reusable and not gonna lose its, um, flexibility and stuff over the time of cleaning, so that we can replace just the filters to give one out to each individual person, so they have their own and they're reusable. Right now, they're so expensive because everybody's purchasing them. I'm trying to see if maybe that might be something that we can purchase out of that part of money that we receive. Um, because it would be a permanent thing, it's, they're not gonna be thrown away or anything. It would just be buying the extra N ninety-five filters that they need on it.
Would those filters be as cheap as just the N ninety-five masks being old rubber?
They, they usually, you can buy new cases, so, and the N ninety-fives are, are specific to the person. So, you have to get a good fit in N ninety-five for each person. They're supposed to be fit tested. So, but if we go and get one that is permanent and fit tested for, we don't have to worry about, like right now, you can't buy, um, certain sizes of N ninety-fives. You just have to basically get what's available. Um, so if we were to get permanent ones, that would be something I'd like to look for. And I have been looking for, but I'm trying to get one that's actually gonna last and not wind up being something that we spend quite a bit of money on and then have to replace them in about a year, so.
All right. Mr. Patrick, please.
Becky, it looks like you've done a lot of good research on this. Uh, I think, uh, I think we need to go ahead and, I'm all for it. I think we need to increase it. Will it still be lower than other counties? And, uh, we need to make sure that we have the material that we can serve the citizens the way they, the way they should be served, in a proper manner, health-wise.
Mr. Sersey?
So, I have the same feelings, even taking care of our employees too. So, even if we went up, even if we were the highest ones, I would, it wouldn't bother me because, you know, we're talking about life.
Well, it's been ten years since we've increased and we didn't really feel right trying to, to make it any kind of increases all at once. It may, this may be just all we need. I mean, just enough
Hopefully it is.
To help pay for the difference in what we're having to pay for, um, extra PPEs and stuff right now.
We're here to help and I'm, I'm all for it.
Well, that being said, we'll, uh, we'll do one thing at a time, that's all right. We'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the price increase, um, for our, uh, ambulance billing fee. I'll make a motion that we accept the price increase.
Can you tell me that, Becky, or just opinion on what it is?
To tell you the truth, honestly, what I did is I took all the counties and averaged it out. Um, so, and we still wound up being lower than everybody, other than, I think Pickens County has a lower mileage rate than what, uh, we do. And there's a twelve dollars a mile versus thirteen. Everybody else is at fifteen dollars a mile.
Okay. All right.
I've got a question. Can we, uh, how's the, is this, when we go out of town, how's our trips? Uh, who's helping us on all this equipment if we're taking away ambulances from our citizens here?
Nobody currently.
Nobody?
Nobody.
So, we're picking up the bill, in other words, to help you and the hospital's not helping us?
We, we don't get any reimbursement from the hospital. We just usually rely on the patients that we're transporting and whatever insurance they have, if they're self-paid. I know the county has a, has something that they work out with them if they're self-paid, um.
I ain't never heard of it.
Yeah, we, we do. We, we try to help them out because if they don't have insurance, we try to help them out.
Oh, that part, yes, I understand.
But that's, we, the county puts the bill there.
I'm talking about the trans, I'm try, the transport of, of another, it's our responsibility to get from A to B.
Right.
Where do they go from B to C? Are we picking up that cost too?
We are right now, yes. We're trying to, to get away from that because we're so busy in the county right now and it's stretching our already stretched resources. But the hospital's in a pinch too because they're full. So, we have kind of extended what we were originally planning on doing. Um, the Conprisies, uh, you know, is coming in, it's gonna be taking their transports from the hospital, um, to help us also because we only have four med units for whole county. And that's why it's hard for us to stretch them sometimes, especially if they have a med unit that's gone for hours on end, on a transfer. Um, so, our plan was is to try and let Prestige just take over completely, but they're currently not licensed in Georgia. They can take the ones to Tennessee and North Carolina, but their, uh, license for Georgia is still pending. So, we're waiting on them to get their Georgia license and we don't want to leave the hospital stranded, so. We're still, we're still helping them out because they're full right now, the hospital is.
But even before that, this, this has been going on for years.
Oh, yeah, since I've been here, I've been here almost twenty-five years.
So, it's just not like COVID hit and.
No, but they've been, you know, they've been, right now, we haven't really pushed trying to get out, taking transfers, just because we don't wanna leave anybody, you know, stranded at the hospital or not be able to, until Prestige can take over. Um, and once they do, we're more than happy to let, help them out if they need us to and take emergency transfers because we're not gonna ever stop taking the emergency transfers because that's not fair to the patient or the hospital. But, um, for them, we'll let them take the ones that they can and then if it's something that needs to go to another hospital, emergency, we'll be more than happy to take it for them. Um, but we kind of halted that, the, the movement forward on that until Prestige can get their license and stuff. And then we're gonna just back on out and let them take over. Um, and then that way we can keep the county's resources in the county. Um, because like I said, we're, we're stretched with four ambulances as it is, especially on days like yesterday. But, um, to have one truck going out of the county for a couple of hours and leave only three and then it's still be stretched is a lot.
Especially with the traffic we have today.
It's, it's been, it's been busy here lately.
Real good. Now, let you go.
Okay.
Uh, what would you say a new ambulance would cost today?
We're working on actually getting a bid for that right now, but we're looking at somewhere around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, depending. Again, with COVID, the cost of the chassis have went up because you can't get the chips for the diesels. So, pretty much those are like finding a Ford Clubber, if you can find one that's new, that has a chip and is ready to be, with a box put on it, you pretty much need to grab it up. So, we're in the, I'm in the process and that's, the next thing is I'm in the process of trying to do the RFP for a new med unit like y'all had asked.
Where are you at on your units now?
Uh,
I mean.
We're, we're okay. Uh, we've got one that needs to be replaced. We only had one bid for the remount of that med unit. Um, so, we, we're fixing to put out a new bid for a new med unit, completely new, with new box and the new chassis, so. Um, right now, we've got, we're, we're kind of, you know, we've got some med units that are down right now. Um, one of them is down before the chip that we're waiting, where all the other trucks are waiting on. It's been sitting at the Chevy dealership with, at no fault to the Chevy dealership at all, they just can't get the part. Um, it can't be moved, it can't be ran. It's not the newest med unit, it's the one that's fixing to be replaced. Um, we have one of our new med units that's down due to the liquid springs, um, that levels out the box. As you're riding down, it won't lift, so it drags the ground. Um, customers picked it up today to take it back down to their facility and fix the liquid springs. We just had that installed three months ago and it just went out on us when they were transporting a patient.
Kind of a warning?
Uh, yeah, yeah, they're, it's, it's gonna be fixed, hopefully tomorrow, but it's been down for nearly two weeks. Um, and then we have another med unit that's down due to the air rack system, which is the same system, but it's an older truck, it's one of our spares. Right now, we've got two of them are frontline med units running and we're running into spares and we have no spares available for an extra call. So, we've been, that's where we run into the, that's where, that's where the striker bids come in because we, we didn't realize we would have this situation. And so, we're in need of, um, some power stretchers because right now, we currently don't have the equipment. And it would take longer to get the equipment than it would to get the power stretchers to put a manual stretcher inside these trucks. They came with the floor plates to lock them in, which you have to have an antler system for the manual stretchers because they don't, our power stretchers lock in with the power strip that's in the middle that charges the thing, charges the stretchers, so. Um, our manual stretchers don't use that to lock into the actual med unit. So, we have to either purchase the kit that will let the manual stretchers work in, or we have to purchase some more power stretchers.
Okay.
Well, I think Chairman hits, I think you've got, uh, a motion on the floor, if you have to make a motion to, uh, before we get ahead of each other. Uh, or, uh, go ahead and complete that. I think it would be good to do that since we've got Sherry over there wondering.
Yeah, we'll, I made a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, love grade billing fee, uh, for the ambulance service. I made that motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Let's see, just right into this.
Good.
In order to that.
Yeah, I've got, uh, I'm wanting to see about purchasing two more power stretchers, which we could have here by, um, I believe this week, um, if we get it approved, you may be able to get it here this week. Um, two new power stretchers, um, and one stair chair. Uh, we've got stair chairs currently and all of our, we've got all the equipment that we need to run all of our med units. But one of our stair chairs is an older stair chair that was in one of our reserved units, um, and it's in need of replacing. The downside to the power stretchers is they weigh a hundred and thirty-five pounds empty. Um, so, we have modified the way that we get our patients out of the residence and downstairs and stuff and we've been using our stair chairs. Um, we put the patient in the stair chair and it has a track system on it and it lowers the patient down the stairs so that it takes most of the weight off of us and it's more safe for the patient. So, the stair chair would be needed if we do purchase the extra, um, power stretchers. Um, the power stretchers are kind of pricey, but I'm wanting to purchase all of it out of Spots. We, that would be the first purchase that I think EMS has made out of Spots. And.
So, we wanted to get two of each?
Uh, just two power stretchers and one stair chair. All of our other stair chairs are in good shape.
Okay.
It would be, maybe she did put two in there.
Well, she did put two.
No, right there, the, the second one where it says, uh, the Stair Pro Model six-two-five-two on the first page, there was just one of those for.
Yes, I see now.
Yeah, that's just one of those. The, the two, the very first one, the very first line was the two power tr, stretchers.
So, the, the chair's three thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars?
It is.
And then the, uh, two, uh, wheel locks, uh, Pro, Power Pros are twenty thousand each, twenty-five thousand each?
They're, they're twenty thousand, five hundred each.
Twenty thousand, five.
For a total of forty-one hundred dollars for a total.
All coming out of Spots.
It is. Um, I asked her to go ahead and add in there on the second page, uh, what they would give us for the trade-in for our manual cots. They were only gonna give us two hundred and fifty dollars apiece and they're worth a whole lot more, so, um, I think I'm just gonna put them on the dot gov auction, see what we can get for them. They're older stretchers, but they're still in good shape. So, um, which I'm sure that they're, they're just like car dealership, they just give you, give you something different and want you to buy theirs, but.
Around like thirty-five or not, so.
There's no other place for us to get bids from because our current operating system out of all of that is, um, striker. Uh, and in order for us to switch to a different one or get bids from anywhere, we'd have to change, change the, uh, power system that's in the bottom of the med unit.
Right. Well, it protects our employees and maybe it also.
They have really been a blessing. I, I was kind of on the fence when we talked about it, um, when they first purchased them because of the weight of the stretchers. But it has saved a lot of people's backs doing it because we used to, um, you, you had to pick up the entire weight of the patient. Now, all we have to do is, um, get on the end, put them under the back of the truck, it clips in. And then both of you stand at the end and it just lifts, that's the most lifting you have to do other than moving your patient. So, it's saved a lot of, I believe, a lot of workers caught on back injuries and stuff like that using the power stretchers now.
Well, you convinced me, Becky. I'm in.
Me too.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll ask for a motion that we approve, uh, to buy two of the, uh, Power Pro XT Power Stretch, yeah, and then one, uh, Stair Pro Model sixty-two fifty. I will ask for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a second. All in favor?
And they do come with a, the, the seven thousand, eight hundred dollar, it's a warranty. It's pretty much they replace anything on it. Um, we have that on our other stretchers and everything and you can call, I have the number directly to the maintenance person and he's there usually that day, if not the next morning. He lives in Murphy, so he comes pretty quick.
Much easier.
Um, we've not had an issue at all with our stretchers going down.
And they've got pretty good last, don't they?
Yeah, they do. We, we've had the current ones, I believe, I can't really remember what was on here, um, we've had the current ones, I think, going on. They were in the old station, so I would say it's probably been five years or more. And we've still got those and we'll take and put the new stretchers on our frontline trucks, the ones like Med One and, um, stuff that are used the most and then rotate the other ones back into the spares.
One question, is there only like two companies that do this at all?
Yes, there's Striker and Inferno.
Striker and Inferno.
Um, there's another company that's come out with like a.
Universal?
Uh, no.
No, no Universal?
No, no, that would be too convenient.
It would.
It would be.
They would bring me surprises.
It really would, it really would, but you can only use Striker equipment with Striker stuff and you can only use Inferno equipment with Inferno, Inferno stuff, so. All right, well, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Number nine, um, we have a, a resolution of Fannie, Fannie County Board of Commissioners to adopt a policy regarding COVID-nineteen for employees. As, as time has moved on from twenty-twenty, um, you know, we, we had some employees at the first of the year still struggling with COVID. Uh, we've had some, matter of fact, we've got, you know, one out now with COVID. So, as it continues, um, you know, sick time gets spent up a whole lot quicker than it's accumulated, or accrued, I should say. So, I wanted to really think about this because we've had fourteen employees so far this year that have been affected by COVID. And out of those, um, some of those employees didn't have sick time. Um, they were either new and, uh, hadn't recruited or only had four hours and, you know, um, some of the employees that have had. Um, they were either new and hadn't recruited or only had four hours and, you know, um, some of the employees that have had more hours donated. Uh, which is fantastic for that employee, you know, to to take some of their time and donate to somebody else. And that that means a lot to me that, you know, they they thank enough of their fellow workers to do that. But it really got me to thinking, um, as much as this pandemic has has come back and as many people as it it has affected here in our courthouse. Uh, to try to make a resolution that would cover um, again, up to eighty hours like it did last year. Um, where it would it would cover them and they would get paid during the time that they were sick. There are some stipulations, obviously, um, you know, they need to provide a a positive test. That they do have it or or have been exposed and are in quarantine by a doctor. But it is uh, in this resolution. If if anybody would like for me to read it, I'd be more than happy to. Um, anybody want me to read? I'd be more than happy to give you a copy of it if you'd want, okay? But it but it does just that, it and I probably gonna get in trouble for this. If I do, then just keep me in trouble. But we did pay in January and February when we probably was supposed to because we knew that it had carried over from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one. So we did pay um, January, February to the ones who were out. Um, but since then, we've had fourteen people affected starting March the first. And uh, this will be this resolution to either give them their sick time back or pay them uh, when they didn't have a check coming in. So that would be starting March the first and I would like to um, extend that to December the thirty-first. And at which time we can um, we can revisit it in January to uh, two thousand and twenty-two to see what the numbers are then. So that is uh, that is a resolution that has been drawn up and I'll leave it to y'all for discussion, so Commissioner Surkey?
Um, yeah, I mean, I what 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 is the issue as far as you mean, these peoples got sick and we didn't help or?
Oh, they've uh, they got sick and if they didn't have sick time, um, some of them didn't get paid or they had sick time donated to them to cover them.
We we did allow that, though.
We did.
We did?
Yeah, we did allow it.
Okay.
And it was a matter of the folks who donated their time giving their sick time back to them. And uh, I know there was a couple of gentlemen that didn't get paid um, unbeknownst to me at the time. But that's what we're trying to do here is to make that right, so. They didn't have the sick time to to turn it, so so they didn't get paid and and that's what we're trying to to write around. That's what I'm trying to do, let's put it that way. I I think we're.
Well, I'm here to tell you, COVID ain't nothing to laugh about. I mean, it's a it's serious and it will kick your butt and uh, it makes you to where you, you know, if it hadn't been for the community, I'd have lost everything. And I mean, it's just uh, uh, I think we oughta, whatever we can do to help people, period, like that, I'm all for. I mean, we do need to take care of our people. And I mean, it's only Christian thing to do. So I mean, uh, other than that, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm anything we can do to help stuff like that, I'm for, man, I mean. What do you think, Coach?
Yes, I'm I'm in agreement with that. Uh, we're just making sure that we're doing what you said, that we we've got, uh, we're gonna go retroactive from March first, two thousand twenty-one to the end of the year.
Yes.
Twenty to fourteen, we cover everybody for two weeks, right?
Eighty hours.
Eighty hours, yeah.
I think that's what was given in twenty-twenty.
Yeah, yeah, eighty hours, usually forty hours a week, two weeks.
Yes.
Uh, I think that's great, I mean, with all these things, they have to have a test and, you know, give us proof. Which is normal way to do it, so I, yeah, I I I agree totally. We need to go ahead and get that going as soon as we can.
Now, it says ten days, you know, but it can go up, you know, here there's up to fourteen days quarantine. So they're gonna get, so we'd still help them.
Yeah.
Chicago, remember, within that fourteen days of quarantine, you don't have to wait.
Two weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
So I have no problem with it, Chairman.
Well, I will make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
When does it go into effect?
It'll go into effect and be retroactive from March the first. It will be effective immediately. Um, and it will expire uh, on December the thirty-first of this year. And if we need to revisit it in January, we'll revisit it.
Sounds good.
That will cover us through through the rest of this year.
Okay, I feel that.
So I will make the motion, we adopt this resolution regarding COVID-nineteen for employees.
A certain.
In favor?
Aye.
All right.
Uh, public commentary. Anybody who likes that?
I hear them all the time when the EMT is going out and people refusing to be transported. Is there some way that the county could collect if there are need there, but they just don't wanna be transported? Could they collect a certain amount reduced fee for them going on the run because it costs the county gas, costs personnel pay? And put their lives and they could go into the scene of a wreck or whatever? Is is there some way that they could be a fee charged if they go out and it's emergency? And they get some some of the money, county money back for it? I don't know.
We do have a policy on that. Um, we can recoup, I believe it's two hundred dollars. We don't normally do it just because it's a service we offer to the county. Um, but if it is somebody that is a repeat person to calls and stuff like that, we do send a bill, most of the time they don't pay it and we don't push the issue, but um.
You quit calling?
No, no, you shouldn't. Even if we do send a bill, they.
Wait, you just weigh it, or then we're gonna.
Yeah, um, but it's just one of the things, um, the that we haven't really had it in the past then um, over EMS. But there's been a few that we've had to send a bill to just to, you know, try and recoup some of that because it is diesel fuel and it is. Um, time away from calls and stuff that may be going on that we need to go on. But um, for the most part, we don't know that, you know, what the reason for the calling is until we get there, so.
I understand that.
Um, but yeah, we usually, we do have something in place for that, we just usually don't use it for the first time.
I mean, I understand that.
Yeah.
But I I was just wondering, but I mean, you know, you figure it will cost you about a hundred dollars every time you go out at the very minimum.
I think on our refusals, it says that we can charge up to two hundred dollars for repeat refusals. I think that's what it says.
That makes sense. I mean, I I didn't know, I wasn't aware you did anything, but I thought it would be good to have this policy where, you know, some of them abuse it. Some of them.
That's just like alarm calls, you know, false alarms and stuff.
Right, same thing.
Then what you'll have, you'll have, then you'll have the police won't start charging you calls out there or them out there. Then it'll just, you know, then we're losing our touch.
We're working on that too.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah, we just don't want to hear anybody from calling nine-one-one for fear of.
I understand that.
Being charged too much, so we don't typically do it unless it's just a, you know, they they call.
You know, like some of them, I I know for fact, there's some of them that, uh, they stopped their toll, they weren't being carried to the hospital.
Yeah.
Or something, then they get out there, well, no, no, I can't afford it, I don't want that now, I'll get somebody else to. Well, it's not taxi service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
I'm Joe Webb, I live in the Dahlia area of the county. I'm here to represent Blue Ridge Community Theater. At the July meeting, I came and asked for a process for the new hotel motel tax product fund, which is now being accumulated by the county. Also by the city, I might add. Uh, at that point, there was no process. We asked for a process in early August, the Chamber reached an agreement with the county and sent out bid applications for grants for this fund. We submitted a grant at the end of August, which I hope all y'all did get a copy of. Since then, the county has made the decision to basically make those decisions themselves, but we still aren't familiar with what that process is going to be. Uh, Jordan Code forty-eight thirteen dash five point two six paragraph P states that performing arts facilities are a tourism product and eligible for funding from the excise tax on rooms, lodging, and accommodations. Blue Ridge Community Theater provides live performances twelve months a year, forty-six weeks a year, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and sixty performances a year live. So we are indeed that performing arts facility and are eligible. What we're asking is basically for funding to make an improvement to our facility, the parking lot. We paid two hundred and twenty-five dollars for about a half acre of land, so we have the skin in the game. We're asking for a grant under this process to then complete the paving. In discussions with Chairman Penzley, he suggested that the city also should be participating in this. They raised from five percent to eight percent. Their fund is about six times smaller than yours, but I have now talked to the mayor and we basically applied to be on the city agenda. And asked them for the streetscape beautification part of this grant. The parking lots literally at the theater are three hundred and fifty-five feet linear frontage and it is facing the city's farmer market. So the city does have some perspective in where we are and improving that location. So we've asked them for twenty-one thousand dollars out of that grant to do the streetscape. We would hope that makes it more agreeable to the county, but we still need to have a process. We do have the bids in now uh, from Johnson Paving for the asphalt. We've gotten basically a freeze on materials for ninety days. Uh, we would like to see if we can get through this process literally this month. Uh, basically, as I understand, the excise tax on rooms, it needs to be spent this year. So Johnson Paving is saying they can complete this year if we can let a contract by October first. Uh, they also said they will hold the price of asphalt stayed for us during that period, so there are no gotchas. Right now, as we understand the ask in the projects, University of North Georgia has asked, the forestry service has asked, the Arts Association has asked, uh, the theater is asking, the county is asked. Uh, basically, you take all those projects that are known as of a week and a half ago, there's still a hundred thousand dollars left over in the product fund for this year. So basically, the money is there, we're asking for a process where that money can be spent and applied for. Uh, if you do not have a copy of this application, I'll be happy to give you one, it's what we turned into the chamber. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions you have, or if you'd like to give me a call, I'll be happy to meet with you or answer questions on the fund. Uh, that's what we have tonight. Uh, we have basically taken advice and gone to the city, we're on their agenda. If the city is unwilling to do it and that's the only way the county would proceed, uh, we will find a private donor to do the streetscape. If that would be what your desire would be. If not, we just soon basically get the whole money out of the product fund because that is legitimate use of that product fund. So we're asking literally, we try to get a motion on the next agenda for approving these funds. Uh, any questions that we happen to ask, answer.
Hundred and sixty performances, do you guys bring in any revenue there?
Uh, we run about three hundred thousand dollars a year operating expenses. Uh, we have one and a half, yeah, one full time, three time, we pay about ninety-one thousand dollars in wages. Uh, we pay basically fourteen thousand something dollars a year in sales tax and therefore basically the county derives six thousand dollars in splash revenue just from our spending as the theater on sales.
And do we fund you guys now?
Uh, no, you don't per se. You're we're not in the general budget. We do apply for grants for co-marketing funds from the chamber, which is coming out of another portion of this tourism product. But right now, there's no direct money.
So the things, and and just so you know, I want you to understand this, the decision that we made to do what we did as far as the ADA compliance and stuff, okay? Um, these are things that actually also help our citizens out, helps our hand.
We understand that.
So, you know, if you're if you're thinking that, you know, hey, we're here too and you're not helping us, you're wrong. I mean, I understand that, but there are other things that we need to get taken care of as well. So um, I appreciate your your persistence on this. And just like we talked, you know, it it appears to me like the county, the county, the county. And that's why I said, hey, I would suggest that you go talk to the city because it is in the city. And most everybody that I have seen stay within the city to go to that. And and I know there's a percentage that don't, but there is a lot that come, tourism comes into the city just for that.
For the theater?
Yes.
Okay, in in the grant application, there's an application, sixty-two percent of our audience comes from outside of Fanning County.
Yeah.
It is truly a true.
You're right.
From outside of Fanning County. Yeah, so we we don't track the city limits, however, it's very small. I mean, there are like fourteen hundred registered voters here, whereas there are twenty in the county. But anyway, yeah, I know the forestry service wants thirty-four thousand for Swingbridge graphic project. The UNG wants fourteen thousand dollars for hiking trail.
And you want a hundred and thirty thousand, right?
I want a hundred and thirty thousand to pay for parking lot, which I already paid up two hundred and twenty-five thousand for. And I am a product under this, and quite frankly, the other money in the hotel excise tax could be used for this. We've chosen not to in the past. This is a special product fund just for products, uh.
What you took in, Joe, what's it, what's the theater take in a year right off the top?
We we basically, in two thousand nineteen, we had two hundred thousand dollars in ticket sales, okay? Last year, we had forty thousand dollars in ticket sales, so basically that's how much COVID affected us. We normally would run seven main stage plays a year, last year we ran three, this year we're running four. We would hopefully back seven plays again next year. Now that says we have some people donated us. We've had literally this much donated over the last three or four years just to improve the building, uh, so we could actually do this thing, performances. Uh, but we run about three hundred thousand dollar a year budget, two hundred thousand of it comes from ticket sales. Uh, ninety-one thousand of it goes to employees.
Joe, did I hear you say that you're gonna ask the city for twenty-one thousand?
Right, if you look at the grant proposal, uh, there's basically a curving portion and a landscaping portion. In that area of the city, they're actually doing planting mediums is the theme out there. So basically, that curving and that planting would be the twenty-one thousand dollars. And those are broken out in the bid.
Why would, why would you not ask for more?
Well, quite frankly, it's a ratio of things. They they y'all get six more times what they have, therefore twenty against a hundred and twenty is about six to one ratio. So basically, we're asking proportionately to what y'all are receiving in the funds.
What did you say, Caustus, run this county plus a hundred dollars, what was that?
I'm gonna bid up now a hundred dollars more.
Was it? So I mean, so trying to find, and and so this money that you're asking for is is gonna come out of what, the squaw?
It does, no, no. This this state law that I quoted, basically forty-eight dash thirteen dash fifty is the hotel revenue tax code for Georgia.
Yeah.
And it basically, when y'all went from five percent to six percent on your hotel tax on January first. It mandated you start spending at least eight and one-third percent of the total on product development, which was not required before, is now required. And that's a hard product. Uh, and governments, and there are only three tourism products in Fanning County outside of governments. That would be the Arts Association next door and they're quite franked right now on the budget general fund for about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We're in the general fund for zero. Uh, there's the History Society, which basically the city actually owns that building, so it's an odd situation. And there's the theater. Those are the only three named tourism products in Fanning County that exist under this tax code. Uh, basically after that, it's governments that we can ask, uh, so.
So the training wouldn't be considered?
No, they are not. They cannot apply the money out of this fund. Now, and they are a nonprofit also, so that would be a problem. So they they actually aren't eligible that much for the tourism marketing funds per se, because that's more what they aim to nonprofits, uh. But literally with the chamber, we put out our season brochure at all the state line welcoming centers. We put out like ten thousand Blue Ridge Theater brochure. So we put out like ten thousand Blue Ridge Theater brochures every year at the welcoming stations. That's one of the things we do at co-marketing. So that's the force we get right now is about ten thousand dollars a year in co-marketing funds from the chamber. And that comes from the hotel excise tax, different portion than this product fund.
So what does the chamber give you?
Basically, with about ten thousand dollars a year, but it's specifically for marketing. It is not for product development. This this actually allows brick and mortar development, the product portion.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. Very excited.
Thank you, Ms. Webb.
Thank you, Joe.
Hi, y'all.
Hey.
My name is Debbie Beck, I'm a resident of Morganton in Fanning County. And did you need my address exactly to the records? Okay, great. I've been here five years in August. I'm here because I am representing myself and potentially disenfranchised voters here in Fanning County. You know, I believe that what happened in the last election should not just be forgotten and should not be set aside. Because if we don't continue to ask for a full audit, we may never have one. So what I'm here tonight for is to ask you, who is my local governing authority, to consider a public policy of some kind where you support a full forensic audit in the state of Georgia to protect the Fanning County voters. I had the pleasure of going to the Board of Registration and Elections meeting yesterday. A fine, fine group of people there. The reassuring thing about being here is that I know all those votes that were in Fanning County, I believe they were counted correctly and honest and honorably, and they they they're good people. My concern is that our votes all went down to a tabulation center somewhere and were mixed with other counties' votes. And that's where things can happen. I believe that we don't know what happened in this election truly. We know that our votes left the county, but we don't know what they, what happened to them when they went to these tabulation centers. And I'll just say that I wasn't really reassured about that when I went to the elections board yesterday. When I understood fully, and maybe they had it recorded to you on this, and maybe you don't have that much interaction with them, but, you know, what happened in our last election, for example, they were in a total state of confusion there because of several things. One, the Dominion machines were brand new, were pretty new. They had a limited amount of training on them. They're very complex. You know, if there are people at knee on your elections board and that aren't really technically able to do all kinds of things, you know, that can be a challenge. They had a Dominion employee who was here for all of the all of the voting times. But they had to rely on that person to do everything, basically, because they couldn't do certain things on the machines. The truth is, I think most local folks may not have the technical ability to know if this employee was doing everything correctly or not. The other thing that happened in our last election is, I believe the state of Georgia, maybe someone here might correct me on this, but set out the S and T ballot applications to every voter. Well, the return address was to our local area, our our local county electors' offices. And they had to go through all those 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 returns that came back. And that invaded their office incredibly. In addition to, they were investigating whether the voter was still there, if they were deceased or what happened to the voter. And so basically, the people, there was an utter state of confusion, I think, not because of anyone's ineptness or anything, but it was actually, I think, intentionally created by some of the people who are running things in our state. And, you know, when our local county, you know, we should be helped by the state, okay? We shouldn't have to have these people make our elections made more difficult. So anyway, on Election Day, I mean, this happened at my polling place. And, you know, people behind me, they were told they'd already voted. You you hear this happening out in California now, okay? It's, you know, it's in the news that they get to the polling place and they're told they're already voted. There's something wrong with our system, okay? And I think it it coincides with the Dominion machines coming in and this mess of the last election. You know, I hear y'all talking about buying equipment and, you know, investigating every piece of equipment and running the tests on the equipment and everything. Well, there's no reason why we can't have a full audit to reassure the voters that they, I'm sorry, to reassure the voters that their vote is true, that there's an honest election that happened. There's no reason why we can't have an audit to do that. You know, and one other point I'll make, and I'll go, you just don't take me too much time, but do you know that people called the elections office and asked to be removed from the voter rolls after our two thousand twenty election? They never want to vote again, okay? Now that is disenfranchising our voters because they don't believe we had an honest election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Beck, let me ask you a question if you don't care.
Uh huh.
So you're 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 talking about the whole state? You're not talking about locally?
I think
You want a full audit of the state?
Yes, yes, yes.
What's that process like?
Well, I don't know, but they're doing it in one county in Arizona now. And some of the counties in our state, people are fighting. People are fighting to have some of these large counties in our state audited. And there's another force on the other side fighting against that, and you have to wonder why. Why wouldn't, you know, why wouldn't you want to reassure the voters that everything was on the up and up? So a full forensic audit involves a lot more than just counting a piece of paper. And then they have to examine the paper. There's a lot more to it, so.
It's a big step, then.
Yeah, anyway, you're the local governing governing authority. You may not think that this is something that you should take up. But I'm just telling you, as a voter, I'm not the only one out there that thinks that we really got taken advantage of in the last election, so.
Oh, I'm with you. I understand, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll blow this public commentary. It brings us to executive session. Do you have an issue we need to talk about that we need to discuss? So I'll make a motion that we go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion, we'll come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. While in the executive session, we discussed HVAC system, put it out for bids. So I'll make a motion that we get bids on HVAC, a smart HVAC system in accordance with the American Rescue Plan guidelines. I'll make that motion.
For the courthouse?
For the courthouse. And the, and the
Police department, police department.
Right, so I'll make that motion.
Aye, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
We're about
Do you have some question?
I was just curious why that was an executive session thing if it what, if you're just asking to go into bids?
Does it have to do with the the American Rescue Plan?
And the contract?
Contract?
How would you exactly handle that?
I wasn't sure how to do that, so I don't know.
Thank you, I was just curious.
I'm still learning, I promise.
That's okay.
But I will.
We know.
All right, any further?
We all, we did it, adjourned.
Nope, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay. Aye.
All in favor?
Amen.
All right.